This panel is the candidates who are running for the at-large seats on the new council. And there are five candidates running for two seats. Can't hear it? Huh. Can I shout any louder than this? Okay. We again have prepared questions to ask the candidates. Again, we were going to vary the order of the candidates being asked the question, but each candidate will be asked the same questions on our list, have two minutes to answer. Two minutes is a little bit shorter than the mayoral candidates, but we have more candidates and we have yet to get to the candidates for the district. So, the first of these questions I would like to ask to Ms. Dotteri. What qualifications do you bring and what distinguishes you from the other candidates?
Well, I am a business owner for 38 years. I am a Rotarian for 33 years. I, here's to Rotary. I was a chair of the Chamber of Commerce for one year. Rick, that's to you. I was mayor for four years and I was a candidate forever. Truthfully, I think it's my business experience that helps me the most because I have had to live through the downfall in 1987 of the stock market, the economic downturns in 2006 to '08, COVID, among a myriad of other issues. Business is how you make your decisions. You have to open your door, you have to pay your employees, you have to pay your mortgage. That experience helped mold me as mayor, where as you know, I didn't shy away from making decisions. It's important that your elected officials are proving to you what they are capable of doing with actions, not just words, not just plans on the shelf, and not a traffic plan from 2011. Look, you all know what I'm going to say next. My incumbent opponents have had 26,380 days in office to prove what they can do. I've told you I've been at it a long time. Why? Because I believe in Frederick. I believe in our capabilities and I hope to serve you on the city council, so I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Kozemec, yes. Yeah, turn on the button and point at your mouth.
I can never tell which one, whether it's on or not. You can hear me? Great, thank you. My qualifications. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology. That really does help. I'm a licensed Realtor. I write and manage grants for nonprofits, right now the Merrill &amp; Depp Community Center. And I spend about 10 hours a week as an office manager for a local general contractor. My experience is wide and varied. I have also sat for, this is my 24th year as an elected official, and I disagree, Jennifer, I think I've gotten a lot done. Frederick was a very different place when I started in this position and to see it come as far as it has come is amazing. I've sat on almost every commission and committee there is in the city and I have a good bit of experience with many of them. I also believe in listening to new ideas with new elected officials, which I've done for the past two cycles and learned amazing things. I'm willing to work with anyone if it helps the city get better. And most importantly, I ask questions until I actually get answers and I understand those answers. That's important, not just to get me the answers, but to get the public the answers. I'm passionate about where we've been and I'm passionate about where we're going. Despite the doom and gloom we always hear at election time, I strongly believe that every single elected official over the years has changed the city for the better. Every single one. And I want to say thanks to each and every one of them for the work they've done, for their blood, sweat, and tears. Finally, I don't beat around the bush, I don't pretend to know what I don't know, even when someone thinks I should. I won't always agree with you, but I will always listen to you and do the best that I can for this city.
Thank you, Ms. Kozemec. Ms. Russell.
Good evening and thank everyone for being here and thank you for this forum opportunity. So, I moved to Frederick in 1983. I wasn't raised here, but I got here as soon as I could. And when I arrived here, I joined the Frederick Police Department. I've served 22 years with our fine Frederick Police Department and I achieved rank during that time, only the first woman to serve as the Assistant Commander of Special Operations. As a lieutenant, I ran our Human Resources Division. I've had leadership opportunities. I've been your city council slash alderman, I'm still getting used to that, for the last 16 years. I've served four terms proudly. I'm blessed to be in an opportunity, to have been given an opportunity to serve the residents of Frederick and all of the wonderful things that happened here. It's changed a lot in my time. I think the other thing that probably distinguishes me from other candidates, and I've been told this, is my very colorful scarves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mr. Shackelford.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight. What qualifies me as a person for this position? One is, for me, is I'm a lifelong Frederickan. That doesn't mean it's automatic by any stretch of the imagination. I've had the opportunity to, my mother's third generation, I'm fourth generation. Mother, grandfather, great-grandfather. And within that framework is, my father came here through the military. They met each other. I met my wife who was in, also, served in the military. That's what makes Frederick special. Persons who have lived here throughout several generations and persons who have moved here to make our community so special. That's a family background. Secondly, my political science background. I majored in political science in college. Got active, very active in politics during my college and during my young adult years. And then, I became a pastor. That qualifies me from the standpoint of how to deal with people. How to love people, how to listen to people, how to work with people. And if you are a pastor in any church, you better know how to handle the money. That qualifies me. Then my athletic background, which allows me to have the opportunity for leadership and also teamwork, how to have a common goal and work with each other. So I've been joining my time with the council for eight years. I think I've provided great leadership. I think I've also showed the capacity to work with others to get things done. And I'm proud of my records and it's a lot of days. All I know is it's eight years for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shackelford. Ms. Taylor, I want to amend the question slightly in your case because I want to ask, what qualifications do you bring and what distinguishes you from the other candidates? As an unencumbered, I would like to also ask you, what meetings, committees, or commissions have you participated in recently that provide the basis and knowledge you will need to serve effectively?
Could you give, everyone, can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So I'm Libby Taylor, running for at-large. So I've spent my life trying to make the world better for everybody. I'm not a politician. I never pictured myself being up here a little bit. I thought if I was holding a microphone in front of a group of people, I'd be a rock star. And if you all play an instrument, maybe we can do that. But early on in my life, I was supporting people with intellectual disabilities, at-risk youth, people who were homeless. And fast forward through years of doing that, I was just thinking about the first homeless shelter I ever worked at. And it was incredibly busy, as you can imagine. But there was this one quiet day. There was no crisis, no fires to put out. And I remember looking at my boss and saying, "So are we going to fix homelessness now?" And I got a blank look and you can imagine the disappointment on my face. But that's how I think about things. If we're seeing the same issue over and over again, let's do something about it. Let's make people's lives better. And I know it's more complicated than that. So I got my master's in public policy so I could get on the front end of these issues that I was seeing every day. So that's one of my qualifications. I have a master's in public policy. I'm a Medicaid policy analyst. I have a background in social work, like I said. I'm also a parent of a toddler and I think that that completely changes your worldview. It's very different now to raise a child than it was 15, 20 years ago. And some activities or people that I've been meeting with, nonprofits, religious leaders, business leaders, but the most important people and the best part about this job is the constituents that have gotten to meet the people of Frederick. I feel so blessed to have the opportunity to meet with them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor. Because I'll get confused if I don't do it this way, I'm going to ask the questions starting in line with each of you and go side. Sorry, I'm just saying that I'm going to, because of the number of candidates, I'm going to ask the question in order as they're sitting rather than try and vary the order. So, Ms. Kozemec. What are your campaign's three top priority issues? And describe the major issues you believe are important to the local business community and your positions on them. For instance, do you support giving purchasing preferences to businesses in the city and the county?
I'm sorry, so the question is, the top three priority issues and business issues?
The top three priority issues and describe the major issues you think are important to the business community. If they're the same, that's fine.
Yeah.
If they're not, that's fine too.
Okay, thank you. So my top three priority issues are taxes, affordable living, and finishing projects. Money not spent for the benefit of city taxpayers needs to go back to those taxpayers. We need to work together with other governments and nonprofits to provide services for those in need without continually duplicating services, which we do all the time. West Side Regional Park needs to be finished and provide social and economic benefits to the west side of the city. So during this year's budget cycle, at the end of it, we had a $34 million fund balance. Part of that's the rainy day fund, but there was still about 20 million left over. We wanted that money to go back to residents. We got a tax break. I would like to see us continue to do that. If money's not spent, it needs to go back to the people who put it. It's not the city's money, it's the taxpayers' money. The greatest challenges for businesses, I think, are also taxes and financial stability. Right? We have to be concerned about where businesses are going to be and I think during the mayoral debate, there was some conversation about the difference between, and most of you actually builders, you probably will, the Euclidean zoning as opposed to form-based zone. We have talked about doing this now for years. It's been in the planning department. It's been brought forward a couple of times. Yet the council doesn't have the ability to force staff to move that forward. To me, that's one of the biggest issues for businesses as well as for residents. I think I'm mixing things up at this point, but we're good for now. Thank you.
Ms. Russell, would you answer the same question, please? What are your campaign's three top priority issues? And could you describe the major issues you believe are important to the business community?
Sure.
One of those would be purchasing preferences for local businesses.
Okay, so I'll just point out that you've combined many of the questions that you sent to us and I'm going to try and answer all, I think, 17 mashups together and try to be coherent. So, the first question was about campaign top three priorities. I was with me, you can buy three, get one free. Public safety, sustainable development, economic growth, and accessible transportation are essential to ensuring our vitality. Forgive me for staying seated, but I feel like a jack-in-the-box up here. Advancing public safety means more than simply maintaining a strong police presence. It involves fostering genuine partnerships between residents, first responders, and local organizations. Promoting sustainable development is crucial as we continue to grow. Economic growth must be intentional and inclusive. My focus is on creating opportunities for quality jobs and supporting local entrepreneurs, especially in the margin sectors. I'm going to move now to the issues in the local business community, which I think you asked about.
Yes.
Right this moment, I'm very concerned about the impact of for-profit retail activities on the Carroll Creek Linear Park that's having an impact on our downtown businesses. These for-profit organizers are based outside of the city of Frederick generally. They come in, they rent it, they charge exorbitant participation fees, and they sell goods and leave. And all of that money is leaving Frederick. And our downtown businesses are trying to compete with this. And we're having a conversation, if you're interested, August 21st, at our Government Operations Meeting, about this impact that has many economic implications. And forgive me, the third part of the question was...
Preferences.
Purchasing, yes. I do support, I'm losing my pages here. We have many, many programs in place right now for purchasing. I'm going to lose the page. But we have, by local preference, we have minority women and business-owned enterprise. We have, that's three in one.
Thank you. Let me explain for the audience's benefit that the candidates were given a list of questions that had been submitted to us by members. And, but we have reworked those questions to try and put things together and get a better understanding for the audience of where you stand generally. I'm sorry if it has tripped you up and, I mean, you're going through your pages and I understand why, but I want to make sure that the audience understands why as well. Thank you. Mr. Shackelford?
Thank you.
Same question is, the three top issues for your campaign and the major issues you believe are important to the business community, including purchasing preferences.
My writing background says there are wrong sentences. That's perfectly okay. The three priorities or top priorities for me is, one is affordability. And it has to do with housing, whether people who work here can live here. I think that's so important. I think the question previously before in the last forum was for an 18-year-old. I have two young adult children who are finding it difficult, one, to be employed, and secondly, when they are employed, to live where they work. Because they want to live where they work, they want to have a social life where they work, they want to be involved in the community where they work. And so that's one of the challenges. Second is traffic. As our city has grown, it's had an increase in terms of traffic concerns and whether our traffic calming, whether there are stoplights. But the all the part about the traffic is connectivity. How do we get from one part of our city to the next? That also involves sidewalk, that also involves transit, that also involves bicycles, that also involves walkability for our city. The third priority for me is leadership in terms of the next council. Although I may not be elected, it's important for me to make sure that the next elected body is able to have, hit the ground running and for it to respond to its constituents in regards to making the government efficient. One of the reasons why, and I'm going to talk to this question later, I'm in favor of the council is, I think, the efficiency of government. Your next question regards for businesses, what a part of it for businesses is supporting our small, supporting our businesses that are currently here. I think that's so important and that has to do with taxes, that also has to do with skilled workforce, that also has to do with streamlining our processes in terms of predictability, in terms of what the fees are, in terms of also permitting processes. And your last question to preferences. I've led on efforts with MWBE, I'm proud of that because I think that economy is important for all of us to be involved with. We have a local business preference as well and also a small business reserve that we have in our ordinances also. So I'm proud of all that for our business community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shackelford. Ms. Taylor, do you want to repeat the question again?
Nope, I think I got it. So, they, my issues for the businesses, what they think are important issues, and then my top three campaign issues are really one and the same. So affordability, so I think everybody who lives here should, everyone who works here should be able to live here. And also childcare. Childcare is very unaffordable. Frederick County misses out on a million dollars a year of lost wages. So if you're trying to find staff, employees, that's really difficult that they can't find reliable and affordable childcare. Also, if they can't find an apartment or housing to live in Frederick. My third priority that also ties into what's important to the business community is investing in our neighborhoods. So if we look at the Golden Mile and all the vacant businesses there, you put them all together, that's two blocks long. We need to do something about that and that's also an opportunity. So I think the city could invest and help small businesses repurpose those buildings, those units. And I want to put that on the city a little bit because a business owner goes in and they do a total rehab, it's, a lot of times businesses don't last very long. It's very risky to open up your own business. And if they go out of business, that's not really fair that they did all that work for the next one. So I think that the city could and should look at those businesses in the Golden Mile. And then for purchasing preferences, I think when we can, we need to be responsible and look locally for that, but we also need to be fair and transparent.
Okay, thank you for your help. Ms. Dotteri.
So the top three are budget and taxes. You heard in the previous segment, 20 years ago, our property taxes were $40 million. Today, they're about $80 million. That's resulted in a lot of spending. Spending that had 10.10% increase in the budget this year on personnel. $3 million in new vehicles, 2.3 million in new equipment, and about $1 million in salary upgrades for old salary study mistakes. What does $1 million in salary study mistakes mean? It means you made a mistake with your consultant. The other is how we build affordable housing. This has been a campaign issue for at least eight years because I go back to my campaign information and we're not talking about it. Affordable housing, we need to identify goals. I'm suggesting a 90-day housing study to report back to the council with ideas from a group that will include two members of the council, members of this community here, building, real estate, and finance, legal, also, excuse me, Realtors, since Donna and I are both Realtors, and to make sure that we are addressing the one big issue, affordability. I hope we get to get to the other part of the housing issue because affordability for young people is key. The next issue is the NACS. I want to bring back the importance of the Neighborhood Advisory Councils and listen to the issues that are important to residents. One of the things we're not talking about much is crime and safety. I've suggested a police kiosk on Carroll Creek to identify a welcome spot for everyone and also to make sure that the vagrancy issues that we're addressing are addressed with the police there. Business, predictability, planning and process. And one problem we do have with the contracting, the 10% issue is there, but we don't track it. We don't know the number. We've got to do that with an inspector general.
Thank you very much. For the next question, we're going to start with Ms. Russell. How would you assess the business climate in the city? Is the city government welcoming and helpful or is it difficult to work with? And would you take specific steps to make the city more attractive to business investment to create jobs and expand our tax base?
Can you repeat the second part of the question? I'm sorry.
I'll go through the whole thing. How would you assess the business climate in the city? Is the city government welcoming and helpful or is it difficult to work with? And would you take specific steps to make the city more attractive to business investment?
I'm a shortish, I'll stand up. I think the fact that we have a thriving economy is testament to the fact that we do have a friendly, good business climate. We work in partnership with a lot of community organizations to bring businesses. Our Economic Development Department aggressively goes out and works to bring businesses into the city of Frederick. And I think that our processes have been improved and streamlined so that we do have a very good business climate. And I'm sorry, again, the second part of the question was...
That's okay. Would you take specific steps or propose specific steps to make the city more attractive to business investment?
Well, I think we need to do more of what we've been doing and I think I need to be, we need to be open to conversations about how we can improve and bring more businesses. But again, I think we are, I don't have specific steps at this point, but what I will say is that I'm interested in hearing ideas and working as a team. Not one alder, council member can do it all. So again, these are ideas that have to come and we have to work as a team. So I'm definitely open to, as I always have been, I'm on the Downtown Frederick Partnership Board, I'm on other boards, to enhance our opportunities and our environment for our business community, which essentially, we have 4,000 small businesses in the city of Frederick which are the backbone of our community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shackelford, how would you assess the business climate in the city? Do you think the city government is welcoming and helpful or is it difficult to work with? And would you and council take, propose specific steps to make the city more attractive to business?
I would describe our business climate as resilient. I don't know if you'd say good or bad or wood word, I would use the word resilient. As we've seen post-COVID, that our business community has been a very resilient business community in terms of working together, also from the city perspective of providing grants and also providing support. The second question?
Would you propose specific steps to make the city more attractive to business?
I don't know if there's any specific steps. I think previously what I mentioned before around transportation, make sure our city is connected. Two is our infrastructure, in terms of those improvements in assets, also in terms of our permitting process. I think it's a series of steps in which we do not want specific one. I think all that for the business community provides some predictability. I think oftentimes when you run a business, one of the things you want to do is you want to add some predictability in terms of your costs, in terms of also, another part I have is skilled workforce. I think it's important for us, not only in terms from an educational standpoint, from K through 12 or college, but also in trades. I think it's also important for us to invest in those skilled workforces for, because we have a very diverse economy. So I think it's a holistic approach and not simply just one approach to, for our business community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Taylor, same question. How would you assess the business climate in the city? Is the government welcoming and helpful or is it difficult? And would you take, would you propose specific steps to make the city more attractive to business investment?
I've been talking to some business owners and I've heard good news that the city of Frederick was very welcoming for new business owners. One of them had a question and they called City Hall and they said, "Come on down and we'll help you out." They really liked what the state is doing also. So you can go on the state and it's called Maryland Express and it has like 1, 2, 3, 4, here's exactly what you do, all the papers that you need. And it'd be great if the city's website could have something like that. It's kind of hard to navigate. And then also grant programs out there, those are hard to find of what people are eligible for. So like Derek said, we also need to streamline our permitting process, partner with schools and trade programs so we can hire locally and then leverage the expertise here. So we're big in biotech and green energy, so we should leverage that and ensure that Frederick is an affordable place to live so people can live and work here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dotteri.
So, many years ago, we created the Department of Economic Development when I was mayor and Donna was on the Board of Aldermen. And that was designed to recruit businesses but keep them here as well. It's a lot easier to keep a business happy than grow a new business. One of the things that we have to provide is make sure that our quality schools, our quality services, our quality of life remain high. Earlier in the session tonight, we talked about Market Street being haphazardly managed. It's not exactly surprising that a 91-year-old person is going to pass away. We have to be ready, we have to be more fleet of foot with our Department of Economic Development. One of the things that we've seen with new developments, and I was talking to Ed Wormald earlier, is the culmination of the project at Warman's Mill with the town center. The idea of a live-work community has to be part of our conversation on the new developments. The idea that we are satisfied with growth and development on the business side of things is just not right. We have to do more. One of the big ideas that I promote is an East Side Regional Park. Yes, Donna, that 2008 plan still needs to happen. But this is when you start a conversation. You start a conversation with a new idea. You work around it. At the quarry site, we have a water feature and a botanical gardens. This is something that we need to get the conversation going on now because then it's in the comp plan. It doesn't surprise people, you can budget for things. And just for the record, quarries, they have about a 30- to 40-year lifespan. they have about a 30- to 40-year lifespan. We're pretty close to that on the existing quarry. So I've thought about it. I want to do some more with economic development. But knowing that the Department of Economic Development does report to the mayor, the council is going to have to set some parameters on performance.
Thank you. Ms. Kazemchek.
I think I got it. You know, you can write it down after a couple times, right? So I personally think the city of Frederick business climate is welcoming and helpful. I get this from both sides because, again, I work for, you know, about 10 hours a month for a local contractor. And I have to put in permits, which are so easy to do compared to how they used to be. It's, you know, you put it in and half an hour later, you're getting something back. It is absolutely amazing. When they call the permitting department, they get calls back. So some of the comments that were said earlier, I'm a little surprised. Our Department of Economic Development and our permitting offices, in my mind, do a great job. I've not had people call me to complain about them. There are specific steps that we can take, though. We can take the steps to make things easier. As Libby said earlier, there are projects, there are programs that exist that we need to make easier to find. We need to make the city's website easier to use. That, I get lost on it all the time. It's a little crazy. The Education Commission and the Department of Economic Development also, I think, should be helping to provide training for residents to do jobs that are needed in the city. So businesses can tell us what they need, the type of employees they need, and we can help provide training for those employees and ensure that people are ready for training as they move forward. So there's a lot of things I think the city can do with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next questions will be 90-second responses. Thank you.
Mr. Shackelford, is the pace of growth in the city too fast, too slow, or about right? And is the city doing a good job of providing the infrastructure needed to support growth?
Too fast, too slow, or just right? I think that depends. And that depends on the specific season and year. To be specific, this is what I say about development. People who, like folks, we have folks in our community who have moved here within the last 15, 20, 25 years. And I'm careful about the development in the context of stopping it. Because folks who have came to our community who are making great contributions wouldn't be here because previously before, there were people in our community who said, "Stop building." So I think it's important. I think the other part about that is that we have such an attractive city that people want to be here. And so in that attractiveness about where we are, the problems that we have are good problems to have because there are cities where people are leaving. We have a city which is attractive, where people want to come. I think it's important for us, particularly from a governmental aspect, to ensure we have infrastructure in place in terms of looking at our transportation models, also in terms of our quality of services in which we have. What's the other part of the question, real quick?
It's the infrastructure. How do you think the infrastructure has been kept up to date with the space of growth?
No, and that's every city. Frederick is no different than that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Taylor, do you want the question again? How would you, is the pace of growth in the city too fast, too slow, or about right? And is the city doing a good job of providing the infrastructure needed to support the growth?
I've knocked on a couple hundred doors and they all talk about development. And they talk about infrastructure. And they're saying it is too fast. And they're put in a state of having to react to it because they don't know it's coming. That's something we really need to look at. We need to value resident inputs earlier on in the process. And Derek, you had mentioned that people are coming here because it's attractive, and yes. But people are also being pushed out. I can't afford to buy a house in Frederick. I'm a renter, just like 45% of Frederick residents. It's expensive to be here. I think we really need to look at what's in the pipeline and the developments happening right now. So we know that there are developments that have been approved. So just take, let's just see where we are and always have our North Stars. Is this improving the quality of life of people in Frederick?
Thank you very much. Ms. Stoddard, you want the question?
I think the voters are speaking because they're asking for change. They're talking about too much development, the traffic through their neighborhoods, how we can slow down the speeding cars. It's all about local neighborhood issues, which, if you had an active neighborhood advisory council system, you would know that and be working on it. I'm really serious about bringing that back. One of the first things I'd like to have the council hear when we get in office, optimistically, is to have the capital improvements projects presented to the council in the first 30 days. Let's see what projects are meaningful and we'll address the issues that we have heard. This is how we're going to make progress. What have we been hearing? It's going to be a whole new day. We're not changing the legal entity, as Donna's going to remember. It's not a new, it's not day zero for the city of Frederick, 1745 to now. But we have to make sure that we are listening to our residents because they're complaining about street conditions. They're complaining about sidewalks. They're complaining about traffic through their neighborhoods. I'm very concerned, as some of you might recall, about water because the data centers are going to cause us to have a little bit of fighting and squabbling if there's a drought condition in the Potomac River. I want to make sure that we're working on that. And honestly, Donna, I would love to work with you or anyone on the West Side Regional Park because this has taken too dang long. And I tell you that we cannot wait longer on this.
Thank you. Ms. Kazemchek.
Thank you. Too fast, too slow, or just right? I feel like I'm a bear and golden foxes come into my house, right? I don't think there's any such thing. I don't think the problem is the rate of growth. It's the rate of infrastructure, right? Our infrastructure is not keeping up with our growth. Fact is, we have the money. We can help fix that. We can move some infrastructure ahead that we haven't in the past. So I think it's the wrong question. People do talk about growth as being, as happening too fast. But then once they start to explain it to you, they are maybe concerned that they're not going to have clean water. They're concerned about people traveling on their streets. They're concerned that it takes them two hours to get to their job. All of these things are infrastructure issues. And again, $34 million at the end of the year. We have the money. Either we give it back to the people that it belongs to or we spend it for the betterment of the people who have given it.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Thank you. As a Minister of Health, growth belongs in our borders. We have to control the destiny of what happens in the city. And it's important that growth accommodate the people that are coming here because, as has been said, we are a fantastic place. We used to be, Frederick was a bedroom community and everybody went down the road. Now there are still people going down the road, for sure. But we have definitely got the attention of people around the state who want to be here and people around the country that want to be here. And so we're also addressing a housing shortage that is, again, not a local problem. It's a national problem. But stopping growth would do the, would do the opposite thing of making it more affordable because if you stop, it's simple supply and demand. If you stop building housing, the housing that exists will get more expensive. And so I think it's very important that we grow to accommodate. As far as infrastructure goes, many of these projects are very expensive and part of the development process and part of the annexation process is requiring certain infrastructure to be paid for by the developers so the taxpayer doesn't bear that burden. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, we'll start off with you on this round. Is the city doing enough to address blight in the downtown and other older neighborhoods?
I can say yes. But I wouldn't say that a couple years ago. There is a new, well, five-year-old policy to address blighted properties. And that is making some headway. However, a lot of people don't know about it. And that's something that we need to do as a city. Here's what we're doing for you. And also, here's the status of this policy. So I'm a policy analyst and I specialize in implementation and evaluation. So that's so much of what I do is, here's the status, here's the timeline, and is this working well? So I hope to bring that to City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stoddard.
Blight, are we doing enough? Absolutely not. Are you kidding me? Asianana has been empty for over 20 years. We started on it. We made some progress. Then another administration came and another administration and another administration. You know what? There were other blighted properties then. We did the test case. We used condemnation with eminent domain. We used it at 20 West Fourth Street. And who lives there now? A nice family. It was renovated. It took a long time. We lost the first round in court locally, but then we won on appeal because there had been a national case to prove it. We are not doing enough. We are taking, running through hoops to try to make this happen. We have quadrupled the size of code enforcement and yet we see weeds and falling apart buildings. The 300 block of North Market Street is ridiculous. And there was a property on, there is a property on 7th Street that I called a member of the board on a year and a half ago. That property is in court now, but it has taken the residents getting peace orders against the property owner. This is not the way government runs. Government needs to be responsive to the complaints of the residents. And the neighborhood advisory councils can be a code enforcement board so you don't have to go to court to solve these problems. We have got to do better on code enforcement. Why? Because residents are asking for it. This is what they want. And if you think blight is a problem right now, just wait till you ignore it another year.
Thank you. Ms. Kazemchek.
Thank you. I think Jennifer makes some very, very good points about blight downtown. I don't, however, think that it is as dire as some people try to make it seem. Yes, there is blight. There's blight all over the city. There are properties that are not taken care of. As a property owner, how much do you believe other people should have say on your property? You live in a city, so there should be some say. There needs to be some control about what happens to a property in a neighborhood. But let's not just pretend we can take them over. We can't. As the sitting mayor said, there is a property that is in court right now. I do expect that we will win that case and that we then can move forward with a number of other cases of blight. One of the candidates noted that maybe we should just take a property owner to court for all of the properties that they own. I don't even know how you do that. That's not realistic. It has to be property by property. And again, as this test case goes, I do believe we're going to see a difference on the properties that are on the blight and on the vacant property list. So I do believe that we're moving forward in this issue.
Thank you. Ms. Russell.
We have a very specific definition of what blight is and we don't have any. We have vacant properties. We have some properties that have been habitually vacant. We don't have properties, we don't have blocks of apartment buildings falling down. So I think it's very important. When we use the word blight, it invokes a very visceral emotional response. I think it's fair to say that we do have vacant properties. And we have some longtime vacant properties. And we are working to address those through the legal system. But property owners have rights when they own properties. So it's, we have to walk a line. We can't just take things. If my, if you came to take my house, I'm sure I would fight against that. So I think it's really important that we, as government, not be overreaching in trying to take properties. We've done that before and we've ended up with a undeveloped piece of park on the west side of Frederick that costs us $1 million a year. So I think we have to be very careful with using eminent domain and using these tools that we have. And the blighted and vacant property ordinance that we passed some time ago, as was mentioned by the mayor, is starting now to take effect.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shackelford.
Yes, I know this issue has been talked about for a long time. One of the things I'm proud of is being a part of passing this ordinance that we had. I think that's also a testament, that ordinance being passed is also a testament to the residents and how residents and government can work together. I'm a little leery sometimes of government doing it all. And so I think this ordinance demonstrates when communities and neighbors and residents work together with government, how things can move forward. Also within that, I'm a little leery of just going by and taking property. Now, at the same time, I also realize there's property values that are being affected by vacant properties as well. So there has to be a healthy balance in that. And I'm happy to revisit this ordinance. I'm glad that my tenure on the council, that we are on the Board of Aldermen, that we at least have something on the books and things are at least progressing and moving forward in terms of addressing this issue.
Thank you. We only have time for one more question. And we'll be starting off with, oh, lost track. You, right? The question is, do you support the currently adopted charter and governance model recently adopted by the council? Are there any changes or revisions you'd like to see based on the operation so far?[1570.94]
I was hoping we would get this. Voting districts, for it, been for it for a long time. Term limits, for it. They said they were for it, but they exempted themselves. I don't think the best option is excluding people from our primary system, that the partisans want to keep it there. I have suggested for several years, a hybrid primary system that would allow unaffiliateds, which are actually our largest political, or second largest political party, to pick a ballot. In fact, this year, it might be kind of interesting for them to jump into the Democratic primary. But the other thing that's interesting is the ranked choice voting question that we got. Now, we were provided question, a questionnaire from an organization that put their questionnaire responses online. And I was able to read, we didn't have ranked choice voting adopted by the council in the last discussion of the charter. Mayor O'Connor says it wasn't applicable. Councilperson Nash said, no, she wanted more information. She wasn't a yes or a no. Shackelford said yes. Kazemcheck said yes. Russell said not applicable, but I'm open to the idea. And McShane, who was on the, who is on the board, previously had supported it. So there were votes for it, but they didn't do it. So why is it that they're having some groups get information on charter and they didn't actually support it? Words or deeds?
Ms. Kazemchek.
Thank you. The new form of government that we put in place last fall has shown me how exactly a separate executive and legislative branch can work well and do things that we were not able to do as a mayor and Board of Aldermen. There are fiscal policies that I want to put in place to ensure that staff is working on the items that the legislative branch feels are important as much as the ones that the mayor feels are important. I'm hoping the district representatives are going to bring things forward from the districts that we can work on as a group and that the at-large members will, will work on things citywide. Not that everybody will work on things citywide, but there are certain things that happen kind of all over the city and there are other things that really are kind of more focused toward different neighborhoods. So the new form of government, in my mind, is excellent. It has worked well so far. We are so early in the process, I don't think there's any way that we can say, absolutely, we need to make some changes. We've barely started. So I don't know how we can say changes are needed just yet. But certainly I think we need to keep an eye on it.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
The new system is far from tried and true for the city. I was not a big fan of creating the election districts, largely because we've worked really hard to unify the city and be like one Frederick. So for me, it was a little disconcerting to see us sort of being divided into sections. I was worried about getting enough people to run for office and I think that might be evidenced with what we've had, the situation that we have now. I do believe that the role of the council leadership is to be a unifying force though for the diverse members of the council. And the council president, I think, should be an at-large member to unify and be somebody that the full electorate has had an opportunity to vote for. I think the decision is made by the council. However, I had voiced my firm belief that the public should choose the legislative leadership. That did not fly. Lastly, I'm a little skeptical of the new system of committees that divides a council into small groups to vet issues on specific matters. Sometimes there are only one or two of us present. As a council, I think we all need to be informed and participate together in public discussions on issues prior to a vote. And we need to be mindful of the amount of staff resources we use to hold multiple meetings and the potential meeting fatigue for constituents who want to stay informed. Nevertheless, I will always work within the system that we have and advocate for change when I think it's appropriate and that are in interest of the Frederick residents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shackelford.
Like anything that's been implemented, it has its ups and downs and challenges. And this is nothing unique. I think some of the conversation that we've had tonight in regards to particularly neighborhoods is reason why I supported districts. Each neighborhood in Frederick is uniquely different. And so I think it's important that persons from those communities represent those neighborhoods in terms of understanding. Also, I think it, my hope is it develops and continues the process of communication in terms of their interactions. As those particular, those particular elected officials represent those specific districts, that they're in tune with those, those neighborhoods, those residents and those communities. Also, I think it helps us during budget time. We talk about particularly some of the issues which we talked about tonight, from housing to transportation to traffic. When a specific elected representative is in tune with that neighborhood, it helps them during the budget process in terms of advocating, also presenting information legislation. I like the setup because I think from my, from my vantage point, I think it's going to provide efficiency in terms of governmental response. So that's why I have high hopes for this. And I've seen this work in other municipalities.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Taylor?
I support the adoption of the city charter. There are a couple of things I wish that would change. I agree with Jennifer that unaffiliated, unaffiliated voters should be able to vote in the primary. And I also think it should be changed from an off-cycle election to a presidential election. So presidential elections in Frederick, the voter turnout rate is 78%, I think. And then in 2021, the local election was 20%. I'm not scared of more people voting. I think more residents should have an input. That's also why I love the districts, to have equal representation throughout the city. And what excites me also is the legislative power that city council will now have. That's what I'm more familiar with when it comes to public policy. I was a policy analyst in the Colorado General Assembly and I spent hours and hours in committee meetings and they looked a heck of a lot different than they do right now.
Thank you very much. I think, I think we're out of time and thank you for your participation.